Okay, so it is now 1:20 PM. And we will start into the agenda for our special meeting on for the canvassing board. So if you all would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amanda, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Allenz?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Here.
Chair Sanchez?
Here. The Commission convenes as a county canvassing board in open session pursuant to the New Mexico Election Code, NMSA 1978, Section 1-13-1. Onto Agenda Item Number 1, which is the Board of County Commissioners, acting as a county canvassing board, consider and approve the canvas of election results of the November 8th, 2022 general election and certify the election results. If I can get a motion and a second to begin discussion on this item. Moved by Commissioner Allenz?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reynolds. Dr. Esken, I will give the floor to you.
Good afternoon again, Chair Sanchez, Commissioners. Thank you for honoring our election officials. It's greatly appreciated. I thought it was absolutely appropriate that Commissioner Allenz held the proclamation and was the center point, as he has created kind of the pathway for other clerks after him to continue this work. So, thank you. So you all received in your packet information that will be shared on our PowerPoint. But, like every election that we discuss, I cannot begin without a whole host of thank yous. As stated previously, the planning for an election starts months in advance. And when you have an election year that has two elections, both the primary and a general, the work never stops. So I'm going to start by thanking, as I always do, Sandra Bali in Human Resources. She and Erica worked late, worked hard, but always made sure that we had sufficient early voting individuals to work our election sites. The challenge often is finding a balance of parties, because that is something that New Mexico law indicates we need to do. And sometimes it can be a checkerboard of, we have those folks here, we can't have that. So it's an undertaking, and they always do a great job. We probably were a little frustrating this year to them, but they took it in stride and did an excellent job. So thank you to them. I also wanted to thank IT. You know, they're often the, you know, we don't talk about them enough, but they do keep, in fact, we had to stop because we needed to figure out what we were going to do, make sure that everything was being rolling on YouTube. But specifically, Matt Hahn in IT really undertook a role in getting remote clocking in for our staff, our election officials. And that helps us, because we don't have to manually enter. And so that was something that he did, went above and beyond, and he and Deb Weir and the crew worked that out. So we appreciate them. Facilities always make sure that all of the voting locations that belong to Doñana County and specifically Andes Segovia, there's a lot of remodeling going on, but he helped work, worked with us to make sure that voters could use the sites that they've always used. So appreciation to facilities, keeping Doñana County clean constantly, making sure that we are presenting our best foot forward. So thank you to facilities. Security, we have Judy and her crew. Security was heightened this year, and I would be, wouldn't, I would be remiss if I didn't discuss some of the heightened security concerns that we had. They just were there, not just here locally or regionally, but also nationally. And so Judy and her crew checked with us often, any concerns we took to them, and Ron helped support that. So thank you to them. I want to thank my staff, and this will actually tie into thanking Mr. Macias as well as Commissioners. Historically, and when I started, we had staff members working mandatory overtime for months on end, which left them unable to do things like attend family weddings, help their kids with schoolwork after school, because they were working till eight or nine. And we wanted to create it a different environment. It has taken us time, but I believe that we've gotten there. And it is also to your credit that we were given, within our budget, an additional six staffing members, and that alleviated so much of the work that would sometimes go on till eight or nine o'clock at night, that holistically, it helped us in such a way that what I hope that means is staff will not leave, that we can keep them there and keep them happy if we're able to give them a quality of life that they deserve. We'll talk about raises another time, but definitely thank you to my staff that go above and beyond every day. And on my hardest days, when things are a little dim, I think about them, and I think about how they always come through for me and for our community. So a big thank you to them. I also want to highlight the idea that this is Janice Hiron's, basically, an official title as our Bureau of Elections Supervisor, and she knocked it out the park, per usual. Her attention to detail has been outstanding. So she and the other leads in our department, you know, definitely deserve those credits. Speaking of security, the Sheriff's Office was able to provide us some drive-bys, you know, at our warehouse location, which is always great. But the bigger thing that they did was, the Sheriff's Office coordinated an all-law enforcement meeting prior to the election based on security, heightened security concerns nationally, and just made sure we were all on the same page. So when somebody asked me, "Are you concerned? Are you concerned?", I would say, "I am realistically concerned, but I feel supported by a law enforcement community." And that was really a great thing to be able to say. I also want to thank our challengers, our watchers and observers at all of our voting locations. Those folks believe in a great, a free and fair system, and the more eyes on the election, the better. So we appreciate those that took their time, took their days at the polling locations to, to support elections. And we always take their feedback. Also, I want to thank, I feel like I'm accepting an award, I'm not. I want to thank Nelson and Fred and the Legal Department, who have had to navigate sometimes some spaces that are not so fun, but they do it without complaint, and they're always available to us, so thank you as well. Speaking of legal, Judge Arieta and Judge Hockes, where our judges on duty, and they supported us very well. Election night ends Tuesday, but for us, the work begins on canvas and the deep dive into all of our polling locations. And we just stopped working yesterday. So thank you to them for being available. And I am going to go ahead and present this, and then I'll, I'll circle back to another thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Allenz?
There was widespread national concern indeed about official election worker official intimidation. Did you have any?
You know, I did not note anything, Chair Sanchez, Commissioners, I did not note anything that was necessarily out of the realm of what we normally deal with. Elections can be emotional, elections can be high stakes for many people, especially if you're on the ballot or you're really supporting somebody on the ballot. And sometimes those emotions can, can get over the top. I think we dealt with the average over-the-top emotions and not necessarily something that was criminal in nature. So the presiding judges did their best each location, and, you know, every election has challenges that we have to address and hopefully get better the next election. So nothing out of the ordinary. And so I'm grateful to my fellow New Mexicans for, as much as they may disagree or not like certain things, there wasn't something specific that I was concerned about.
So there was no intentional inflammation?
Not that I'm aware of, not to meet any kind of level where it'd be reportable. It was something we would note if something happened, if they were upset, maybe a candidate shirt had to be removed or things like that, and people aren't happy about that. But again, it's part of the law, and so we, we have to follow through on that. So again, I am grateful to our citizens of Doñana County for keeping it civil while disagreeing.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're just going to kind of look at some numbers. We do this every election. Absentee voters, we had markedly less this year than we had in another general election, but it's apples to oranges, because in 2020, of course, we had a pandemic. So 27,000, near 28,000 was the number, and we had a little over 7,400. It was only a little over 1,100 in the primary, but again, turnout overall was lower then. So we had a very busy election day, over 26,000 early voting in person. I'm sorry, that was early voting. That was comparable to election day. We had 3,000 people more participate in early voting. And early voting is a great opportunity, not all your state has the extent that we do. We start 28 days before, and that has really driven our participation higher. So again, you can make the comparisons. We had a little over 5,500 in the primary and over 40,000 in early voting in 2020. Election Day, we had a little less than 24,000, and again, 8,800 in the primary and under 15,000 in the general. So participation was steady compared to 2018 mostly, but in a comparison to 2020, we had less participation. So this is the first general election in which we've had same-day voter registration. Same-day voter registration, it assists us in keeping our voter rolls more accurate, because if somebody shows up to voting location and their address isn't correct, they can utilize same-day voter registration. I would like to highlight the winners of the costume contest for Doñana County, which would be Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs, who are also our election officials, right? We like to have fun. We tend to have elections around Halloween, and so we appreciate them getting into the spirit and being part of Doñana County's contest. And so with same-day voter registration, again, we had quite a few people utilize it. If you can see, there was well over 2,000 folks between early voting and, and election day. And voters were happy with this option, especially students who woke up that morning saying, "My mom said I needed to vote." Maybe they haven't registered, they were able to with an ID and confirmation of their, where they lived, their address in Doñana County. They had to wait a bit, but the opportunity was given to them, which is great. All right, some of the challenges, we always like to talk about some of the challenges. We never say problems, we try to be, you know, positive. You know, there was a requirement for, I think, I think it was a fourth booster, and it did remove many people who wanted to serve as election officials. And so I got quite a few complaints about those individuals. They said, "I'm already boosted, boosted, can I?" And so that's something that we may want to consider talking to administration about moving forward, because I know we lost out about 40 or 50 folks that wanted to serve with us, and we're not able to. The challenges were the security risks and tension. Whether it was actual or implied, the tension was there. We did have, you know, I mentioned, we didn't have anything that rose to any level, especially on election day. But again, it is heightened, and we are living in unprecedented times connected to elections, and we, it was something that we all were under the umbrella of during the entire time. And so what we always do in our future planning is we're hoping to continuing to build on the training for election officials. I tend to do the opening of the election official trainings. And what I say is, you know, even if it's painful, we want to hear feedback, and we do send out a survey that asks for feedback on how we could make training better and more applicable to what they're, they're doing. And we receive it. Sometimes, you know, they, it's interesting, because the feedback can range from, "Your trainings are way too long." They're about two and a half hours or so. And then I get another, like, "I cannot believe that you just give us two and a half hours. We really should be all there all day." So we try to find a balance between that feedback to get election officials what they need. And the great thing is, is that we're continuing to recruit. And, and the more we recruit, the more people we have in the hopper, so to speak, the more experience they have, and the better elections will run. What are the next steps? After county certification in general, are, are, all of, everything that we've done connected to canvas and the certification process is sent to the Secretary of State, and then at that point, they do their, what I call their deep dive. They head into everything that we have submitted to them, connected to reconciliation, all of our sites. And, and they will be working from now until after Thanksgiving at the State, Secretary of State's office to affirm what we've given them or ask questions if they have them, and we answer them. And the plan currently is they are convening on the 29th of November. It is the Chief Justice, the Supreme Court, our Secretary of State, Maggie Chulis Oliver, as well as our governor that will be convening. And the Secretary of State will send certificates of nomination to the winning candidates on December 9th. There's also a process that an auditor must select precincts to be audited by November the 20th, and I actually believe that's the 22nd. So excuse me if that's, that date might be incorrect. And what happens is, at that point is, you know, we have 190 precincts in Doñana County, and so they will randomly select precincts within each of the counties across the state and audit them for accuracy. And that's really important. We are likely to be included, because we are a large county. But the auditor will let us know the precincts, and then we must complete the audit within 10 days of the notification. There is going to be a recount that we're involved with, and that would be the District 32 State Representative race. We frankly have a smaller role in it than we usually would have, because there's only two precincts that are in Garfield and Hatch area. I think it's 60 and three that are included in that, and the bulk of it is in Luna County and a little bit in Hidalgo. So that will be ordered by the State Canvas Board and conducted by a recount precinct board, which, again, are the election officials that we honor today, in the presence of myself and one of the district judges. It's likely to be the first week of December, we're thinking it's going to be December the 5th. And the expenses for that are reimbursed by the Secretary of State. So here is a, as always, a nice photo of our voters actively participating, intently filling out their ballots. And so we want to, again, thank our community as well as our election officials. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Esken. Are there any questions from the Commission, from Dr. Esken regarding the canvas, the results that were provided?
If, if I may?
Yes, please.
I guess this would be like a Commissioner appointed privilege for myself. In September of 2018, I came up this, behind this microphone, and I made a case for myself to become your next county clerk. And although I don't believe any of the Commissioners present today were there at that time, I know that, at the time, I was highly encouraged to continue to keep Lindsay Bachman as my chief deputy. It was the best decision I could have made at the time. Many of you know that Lindsay Bachman will be leaving us, her last day is next Wednesday. We are leaving on great terms, luckily, and she is working in an adjacent field, so we will not be losing her, and we'll probably keep in contact with her. So I just want to say that at probably unprecedented times in elections, in which our integrity, our intelligence, our motivations are attacked, in a time in which is, I would say maybe historically the most difficult time to serve our community in this capacity. I would not have been able to do it without Lindsay Bachman and her commitment to not just her community, but also to our staff and making things a better place for them. And so I just would like to extend a big thank you to her, her service, her time, the blood, sweat and tears, all of the things we have navigated together and made a stronger as a team. I will be welcoming a new chief deputy, I'm excited about her, and Lindsay and her have always already connected, and I'm confident that it's a great fit. I also would like to acknowledge Commissioner Allenz, again, and his work as our county clerk and being a trailblazer in many ways, that put Doñana County in a perspective of us being very forward-thinking. So I appreciate you and your service very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Bachman, for all your service to Doñana County. I know in particular, you being a bridge, I wasn't on the Commission as, Dr. Esken had, had noted, but, you know, your work through 2018, even helping administer the election in 2020, as the clerk was on the ballot herself, and so she had to step away from the office during those times. So thank you so much to your service, to the county, to the residents of the county, and for everything that you do, and best of luck on your next endeavor. So thank you, appreciate it. Commissioner Reynolds?
I want to take a couple of minutes, too, to say thank you. Lindsay, you know, sometimes we don't realize the value of our deputies, okay? Not, not everyone does, but I got to tell you, in, in elected officials, you know, for the assessors, the treasurer, you know, the clerk, and what's the other one? Can't remember. Oh, sheriffs, sorry. That's right. You know, for the other elected officials besides us, I mean, we have, we have a fairly good support team, but I got to tell you, without the effort of the deputies, you know, there's a, there's, it's a huge lift for anybody elected, and then not to have the deputies just makes it that much harder. So Lindsay, I know, because you and I've been, you know, working kind of together on and off for like four years, I, I know how much you, how much you bring to the job, the dedication, the expertise, the heart, you know, the commitment. It's, it's fantastic. So we, we are going to miss you, okay, every day. And, but still, we thank you for your service and wish you the best for your next endeavor.
And I did want to note, to make this election even more fun, we have our, we had to worry, and I mean, this is where I think we've had a lot of discussions with Mr. Macias, the staff, was the redistricting and making sure that to the clerk's office, you all did an amazing job transitioning from what was approved by the Commission, getting that ready for this election this year, so that voters were in the right precincts, right districts, right? And I even had, I know, I'm probably not the only one, but during the primary, I received phone calls of, "Hey, why am I, you're my Commissioner, why didn't I, why am I receiving, why am I receiving this or, or information, or why am I up for election on, in different districts?" And so we had to explain to them, I think that was my sign that the system worked and that you all did an amazing job working with the county staff. But thank you for administering this election again and again. Ms. Bachman, thank you so much. Is there any other comments, questions regarding the, the canvas from the Commission? Okay. Then I guess at this time, we'll open it up to public input on the agenda item. What we'll ask is that those that are coming up to speak will have two minutes to provide input on the item. And so I will ask that you state your name for the record, and then, again, you'll have two minutes. So I'd like to invite people to come up for public input.
Benny?
Commissioner Allenz? After public input.
After?
After public input, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead. Yes, public input.
Is this on the, the motion?
I'm sorry.
Is this on the, the?
The motion, the motion to approve the canvas, the canvassing results.
Okay. All right, my name is Joan Shearer. I'm a resident of Doñana County and a professional of over 50 years in the actuarial field. Because today, the Commission is going to be making a motion to certify the 2022 general election, I'm asking that you hear the questions that need to be asked and obtain answers for them prior to the certification. To give you a little background of my questions, on Election Day, November 8th, I arrived at 7:00 AM at the Farm and Ranch Museum on the east side of Las Cruces, as I was working as a poll challenger. The e-poll book login credentials weren't being recognized when I arrived, and in response, poll workers were turning away voters at the door, asking them to find another location, rather than encourage them to remain in line to vote. No attempt was, was made to maintain overorder confidence or was in evidence. For an hour and a half, poll workers continued to turn away voters until someone arrived to provide credentials to log on. Was the pure, was this pure incompetence that correct login credentials weren't provided so that the polls could open on time? Were there other reports of failed login credentials in other locations? What caused this oversight, and is it likely to happen again? Later in the day, approximately 2:00 PM, while a steady stream of voters came through the doors to vote, one of the printers stopped printing. It took two and a half hours before someone arrived with toner cartridges in order to continue with the voting process. Is this pure incompetence that backup supplies for printers were not included in supplies for the day's operations? What caused the oversight, and is it likely to happen again? In the late afternoon, I personally received a phone call from a voter who'd been giving my name and, as a person who was having problems at the, at the Good Samaritan polling location. They didn't know whether their vote was going to be counted.
Ms. Shearer, I'll have to ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay. Two of the tabulators had come down and had not been working. That was all that they had there, so they couldn't, nobody could vote there. Is it pure incompetence? Or why would two machines become unavailable? Thank you.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind also signing the book on your left for our records. Thank you, Ms. Shearer. Okay. Is there any other public input? Good afternoon, Dr. Garcia.
Good morning. Dr. Anne Garcia, PhD in psychology, retired federal agent. Today, I would like to share with you what I witnessed during the last three elections regarding voter ID and addresses, and how our voting system has been systematically weakened over the past years. In the general election 2020, I was the presiding judge, at what time the election poll book had the following prompt, "What's your current address?" If a voter had moved, the poll worker was instructed to provide them a provisional ballot. The importance of voting with a current address has to do with the down-ballot candidates and issues. In 2021, I was also presiding judge, this time during a training session, we were instructed to provide standard ballots to all voters, whether or not they moved or could only remember partial address. This instructions were contrary to the election code. This year, I was a challenger at various poll locations when I first arrived and learned they had a registration clerk at each location for same-day registration. I was very pleased. However, after hearing the poll workers asking all types of questions concerning voter address, I learned from the residing judge in the county had removed the prompt, "What is your current address?", and the poll workers were asking questions, "What address did you register with?" When I discussed this with the presiding judge, she said it was optional. Knowingly allowing a voter to cast a vote for down-ballot candidates and issues where they no longer reside as a problem. On November 2nd, I forwarded this issue to the RNC hotline. On Election Day, they advised me, they would advise all challenges to make the formal challenge, so they could report it to the proper authorities. This is a question, if you have a registration clerk at every polling location, why don't you want them to update the registration? Why are you allowing voters to cast votes for candidates they should not be voting for? This is a red flag. These poll books and our Dominion tabulators have not been issued a certification of accreditation. Therefore, they cannot be used without violating federal law. This certification of accreditation was designed to protect our elections. Therefore, you should not certify this election unless these machines are accredited and we hand count the original ballots. Thank you.
And Ms. Garcia, if, Dr. Garcia, if you wouldn't mind signing, thank you. Okay, are there? Anyone else would like to speak?
Hi, Commissioner Sanchez and rest of the Commissioners. I'm Beverly Hogan. I reside in Las Cruces, New Mexico. My husband and I moved here in 2015 from Pennsylvania. We have been voting regularly at Sonoma Ranch Elementary School. My biggest concern, I served as a challenger there. You have amazing poll workers who went above and beyond that day with a situation that I find intolerable. The tiny little lobby of Sonoma Elementary School in no way is able to handle the 1,139 voters that were there that day. I know voters that were lined up got turned away. It's way too small. There's no privacy with the angle of the machines. There's a gym right down the hall that the poll workers noticed was empty. And having gone that morning to vote with a neighbor, we wound up going to Desert Hills Elementary School. Much better situation. You go inside, just like the photo Dr. Askin showed, the workers are on this side, 15 feet away are all the lined-up places where you can vote, plus the tables where we old people went and sat down and spread out and were able to vote. So much better. I don't think you can ever have this situation again. I was asked by the presiding judge to go out and look for people who were in distress in the line, which went to beyond the back of the school. And as I did, it was, it became very apparent to me that people were just very frustrated. I had to look down in order to not see what people were writing on their ballots. It was very tiny. So I would really request that you never again, ever again, use the lobby. It involves taking down what they were doing as a early voting place and moving it to the gym for the general elections and the primaries. I was there for the primary and it was the same problem. So I really would like you to do that. I mentioned it to Lindsey, who, we didn't always agree, but she certainly felt that I should bring that to your attention. And I have copies, and I'm going to leave for everybody, of what transpired that day.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And if you have the copies, you can provide it to Mr. Macias.
Sure, I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Further public input?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm ready to talk about structural problems from the state, the legislature level, and not pick on the county clerk today. It's hard to certify elections right now the way they are. We have no in-person voter ID requirements, and that just goes on and on and on. But everyone I saw at the polls wanted to show their ID. The charge of voter disenfranchisement by requiring photo ID is an insult to every minority and Hispanic. Similarly, we have no signature match on absentee ballots by law. Now, two years ago, a canvassing meeting, two years ago, I was here. It only passed 3-2, the certification of the election two years ago. Ms. Solis, Isabel Solis and Mr. Ramon Gonzalez voted no. Have you all talked to Ms. Solis or Mr. Gonzalez about why they voted no in 2020? Because it could affect what's going on here today. So anyway, let me finish with, we are troubled by the New Mexico Secretary of State usurping your authority to certify the elections, because that's the way we see it. We support you in your fight to regain that authority, even though sometimes you could maybe listen to us a little bit more. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds.
Good afternoon, Ms. Howie.
My name is Jeff Howie. I guess you knew my name. I'm going to read something here. I'm going to ask county manager to hand those out to the county attorney and the Commissioners, please. Two years ago, I was thrown out of this meeting. If you were here, you witnessed that. I had a valid medical and religious exemption from wearing a mask. County Manager Macias threw me out under the authority of his office and used the sheriff to do so against my New Mexico and federal civil rights. I'm here today to make a stand against what happened then and as well as what happened this time. I'm here today because that election has been proven to be fraudulently influenced by foreign countries and enemies of the state of New Mexico and the United States. Have you taken the opportunity to watch 2,000 mules? If you have not, it proves that the ballots in New Mexico were stuffed in that election fraudulently. If you haven't watched the Otero County Commissioner's final report on the November 2020 audit of the election, which that happened just a couple of months ago, you need to watch that before you certify this election. In that meeting, a statistician proved statistically that 2020 was fraudulently influenced by stuffing ballots in the middle of the night. You can't say it didn't happen this time. There's government cameras on ballot boxes that can prove otherwise. You've refused to listen to countless people come to you repeatedly stating state law. If you certify this election, the canvass, you're committing a felony under New Mexico state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howie. Is there any other public input?
Good afternoon. Hello. My name is Jacqueline.
And if you wouldn't mind, can we lower it that way we can hear you? Thank you.
And as far as this election goes, I want to know why the Secretary of State did not recuse herself, being that she was in the election. Also, I want to know why they started off with 50,000 to 80,000 ballots more than the rest of the candidates. The other thing that I want to know is, on her website, the day before, she had 17,000 or no, 17 million residents in the state of New Mexico. Changed it to 1.3 or 1.2. To me, no. I'm sorry. I don't think so. That automatically causes fraud, including with the ballots and everything. County clerks should have also seen that. It's ridiculous. I even heard everything that everybody else said, stated about the Farm and Ranch. People were getting cussed at from certain, I believe, judges in certain areas. It's awful. This is the first time that I've been here. I've been voting since I was 18. I've never seen anything like this before. To me, it's disgusting, and I expect you guys to overlook it, to not certify, to recount. I handed my ID to the guy that gave me my ballot. Oh, you don't need that. Why not? I give it to, whenever I go do my taxes, I give it to everybody else. So you guys need to do your job, otherwise you guys are on notice.
Okay, are there any other comments for public input?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Cry, retired faculty member at NMSU. And I was a challenger for my party this time, and I was in the previous election. I'm just here to say I'm so impressed with the people that work at the polling locations and in this case, this year, the data warehouse. They do an excellent job. I can always come away very impressed with the election process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cry. And if you wouldn't mind also filling out, thank you for our records.
Good afternoon. I'd like to start out by saying thank you to everybody that worked the elections. My name is Mark Veeth. I live in District 1 in the county. I believe that our county clerk said that part of her campaign promises were to fix the elections in this county. I believe that all of us believed that that meant repair. However, it seems to me that fix means this person is going to win because this is the person we want to win. I say that because when we get to Election Day, one candidate has an extreme lead over the other candidate that's insurmountable. Even though the Election Day, it will swing back, it doesn't swing back enough. I had the privilege to be part of the audit for the 2020 election. I had seen half of 2,000 mules. My conclusion in seeing that is it could be fabricated or it could be real. So when I got to do that audit, I concentrated on absentee ballots. In the absentee ballots, I just picked out random stack and I went through them, about 15 of them. Joseph Biden, Joseph Biden, Joseph Biden, Jorgensen. Joseph Biden, Joseph Biden, Joseph Biden, Joseph Biden, Jorgensen. Joseph Biden, Joseph Biden, Joseph Biden, Joseph Biden. Statistically, it's impossible. You've got two pink, 13 blue and no red. These elections start out with one candidate way ahead. It happened in the primaries and it happened now in the general election. And like I said, there's an insurmountable lead when they start. I think that with all the equipment failures that you had on Election Day, happened in La Mesa, I was there, and I've heard it from a lot of other folks, equipment failed here, equipment failed there. I think you need to ask what happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Veeth. Okay, any other people for public input? Okay.
My name's Bernie Diggman, and I would, from this side of the podium, like to again thank the county clerk and her office and the poll workers for an outstanding election. There are a lot of human beings involved in these elections, and to expect that there's not going to be a few glitches is setting a standard that nobody can ever meet. It's easy, cheap logic, faulty statistics to try and prove otherwise. The checks and balances and audits and certifications and reviews that go on in these elections prove time and time and time again that these are legitimate, that the staff is doing an excellent job, they're backed by the county commission, and they're backed by a lot of people who understand statistics and just don't show up at these meetings. I would encourage the certification of this election based on the facts, and I again would thank those people involved in it for having to put up with this nonsense over and over and over again. They were doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diggman. Okay. Take one last call for public input? All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ellens.
Thus far, I've been given absolutely no reason not to vote to certify this election. For the most part, most of the testimony has reactivated my desire to excuse myself and return to planet Earth.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellens. Is there any other comments from the Commission? I did want to say, you know, I know we're, in addition to those that came and spoke today, we've received emails as well that were bringing up concerns about the election. And while I know this is something that we've mentioned, I think at the primary, during when we certified the results of the primary, I just want to bring it forward that if there is a concern about the election, that also can be raised through the New Mexico Secretary of State's office. If you go to the New Mexico Secretary of State website, if you click on voting and elections, there is a link there for a complaint form which can be documented and raised. And that way, it is something that you can do with the Secretary of State as well. So I would encourage you to take that opportunity to raise any complaints with the state level as well. There were comments also made, I think, that we're talking about, much of the process is done through, as per state statute. And if there's concerns about that, I also would encourage those to reach out to their legislative representatives or Senate to talk about those things. So with that, I don't know, Dr. Askin or Ms. Bachmann, did you have anything else to add? Okay. Well, at the moment, we have a motion and a set that's been seconded on the floor before us. There are no other comments. Amanda, will you call the roll, please, on Agenda Item Number 1?
Commissioner Ellens?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Vice Chair Murillo?
Yes.
Chair Sanchez?
Yes. The motion passes 4-0. The Commission approves. And so with that, we've reached the end of our agenda at 2:05 PM. So we will adjourn. There are no other objections for the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally.
Thank you.
Finally.